I call to order the January 5th, 2016 Riverton City Council Finance Meeting to order at 6:45. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Ma'am, I would move to consider claims to be paid in the amount of $598, $5981.14 checks written for payroll liabilities for 12/11/15 and 12/25/15 in the amount of $664,805.89 manual checks in the amount of $2,206.07 for a total of $1,167,993.10.
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, no. Does anyone have any questions? Let's do that part first. I do. Um, what is the, it's on page 13 of 16, the Whamco Lab Incorporated, what is that? It's for the...
Plutus, yes, sounds like something to do with water. Forty-two, that, uh, Madam Chairwoman, that would be with our wastewater plant. I'd have to see the invoice to speak intelligent now.
That's all right. Thank goodness for Courtney, she's prepared.
I know. Madam Chairwoman, these are just tests that we do at our treatment plant to ensure that we're maintaining the chemical levels at the appropriate amount before they enter the river.
So do we do that, like, just annually, or do we do that quarterly, or how does that work?
I don't have the answer to that question, Madam Chairwoman. I can find out the frequency of those tests.
Okay, 'cause I've just not ever seen it on here, so. And then, um, for, it's on page three of 16, for Dave's Asphalt. Is, what exactly, where is that, that we did the resurfacing?
Madam Chairwoman, Dave's Asphalt was our contractor for First Street and 16th Street with our Forest Projects with the 1% fund.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. And Stephen, is there any further business? All right, meeting adjourned.
I now call the January 5th, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM, and, well, Councilmember Larson is not here. Okay, would Councilmember Gibbon say the, lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Okay, would you? Okay, Sean Peterson will offer an invocation when we get done.
...................................................
Our kind gracious Father, we are grateful for this opportunity to gather together tonight as a council and a city administration to be able to put forth the work for this great community that we live in and that we reside in. We ask you to please watch over us tonight as we will be able to have thy spirit to lead and guide us as we make the decisions, as we go forth establishing the, the policies for this great community. We ask you to please bless the members of this council and the administration that we be able to do thy work, and we ask for these saints' name of our Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Larson from tonight's meeting.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember, uh, Larson?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the agenda as written.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Councilmember Larson, we just excuse you. So, um, is there any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Uh, communication from the floor, uh, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding the item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. Ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves from the record.
Mayor and council, I'll go ahead and take the opportunity to speak for a moment. Uh, I'm Jim Gores, I think is, well, you know, I met briefly last night with the, uh, Recreation Rec Board, and, uh, suggesting to them that, uh, we as a community, uh, could better ourselves by, uh, embarking on a program to maintain our recreation paths in town, just as we do to restore our infrastructure. Uh, and I'd like to try and gather a group of like-minded folks that could perhaps put together a consolidated program to, to, get maintenance on, on those trails, uh, perhaps with funding from, uh, the County Rec Board as well as the local rec board, and, uh, trying and, uh, maintain that infrastructure as able to do the water sewer, street system in the community, so, see what we can come up with, and maybe back to give you an update. Thank you.
You bet. Well, uh, I guess the announcement went out, and, uh, over the, over the TV, and, and, uh, and so if there are people in our community that are interested in, uh, especially bike, bike paths and the recreational trails, that, uh, want to get in touch with Mr. Gores, um, and see if we can't do something to, uh, bring those, bring those paths back up to, uh, new condition. Thank you, Jim. Uh, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes December 15th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting, approval of the minutes January 5th, 2016 Finance Committee Meeting, approval of Finance Committee Recommendations for January 5th, 2016, approval of discharged fines of deceased defendants for January 2016, and a replat of Woodridge Estates Laws 3 and 4, Block 9, petitioner Terry David.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor, um, Finance Committee Recommendations of Claims to be Paid in the Amount of $500,981.14 Checks Written for Payroll Liabilities for December 11th through December, or, and December 25th, 2015 in the amount of $664,805.89 Manual Checks in the Amount of $2,206.07 For a Total of $1,167,993.10.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the items regard, involving Bailey Enterprises.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. Resolution number 1327, Designation of Official Depositories. Could we have the city clerk's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor, we do this annually, and it's a statutory requirement that we designate official depositories as, as, as well as, uh, name those required signatures for payment of monies from the city accounts and designating certain individuals, uh, as signatories and alternate signatories. We received applications from Central Bacon Trust, First Interstate Bank, US Bank, and Wells Fargo Bank. And we not only sent out letters, first part of December, we also followed up with a phone call, and those are the applications that we received. We see, received certified resolutions from their Board of Directors as well as a financial report.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution 1327?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve, uh, Resolution Number 1327.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I have a question.
Your Honor? I, I guess my motion should, was included that we approve all four of them, 'cause it says out here, point one, or a few, or all of the applicants submitted, so I'd like to make my motion to, that we approve all of them.
Okay. So then that goes back to my question is, is, so you, we had four on the potential, but we got...
Your Honor?
Letters from three.
We had six.
Well, six.
And we only received four letters. Well, actually, we received three, and we included the fourth from First Interstate to make sure that they're in with our, our other official depositories, but we could have potentially received six.
I see, okay. And so then First Interstate Bank is something we approved a month ago?
And, yes, yes, Your Honor.
Okay, and so that carries over?
Yes.
All right, good, thank you.
Your Honor?
Mr. President.
I guess my question would be, do we need more than one, or, more the merrier, or how do you see that?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
The ability that that gives us is that when we decide to bid out money for CDs, we get pretty good interest rates. We know that there is a bank that doesn't want any public funds, they've got too much money already, um, and, uh, so it gives us a little bit better potential for higher interest rates if they, they do, but technically, we only need to have the official depository name that we have city accounts in. Right now, it's only Wells Fargo and First Interstate Bank.
But if we have more than that, gives, opens our options up better?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Resolution Number 1328, Designation of the Official Legal Newspaper. City clerk's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, again, this is another statutory requirement that we have to designate an official newspaper because we have to publish minutes, agendas, salaries, uh, two or three times a year, so, uh, since this is the only newspaper defined by statutes, that's a designation per Resolution 1328.
Riverton Ranger.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution 1328 Designating the Riverton Ranger as the official newspaper.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the Riverton Ranger as the official newspaper. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. President.
When you say that it's required, is it required by city ordinance, or state that it's a newspaper?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Statutory requirement.
So it's a state requirement?
Yeah, state requirement, state statutes.
I guess my question is, seeing as how, let's be honest, things are moving away from print and more on to the internet, is, is there a possibility that, I mean, we already have a city website that basically all that same information could be put on? Uh, I guess what I'm thinking is, is there any type of a move at all to get away from a newspaper and, and being able to do it on the web where the city can do it themselves?
Your Honor, we, that has been a discussion for approximately two to three years, and I think the Wyoming Press Association has a lot to say about that. But, uh, uh, right now, there is no movement to go towards anything on the internet or a published internet site. It has been, it has been investigated, though.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is leadership ballot. So we got, can we remember what the process is here, or do we need to be coached?
Oh, Your Honor, uh, I'd be happy to.
Coaches?
Coach us a little bit. It's pretty simple. We'll, we'll first do the council president, so if you just mark the box of the person you think should be council president, you'll hand him to the chief, and I will take him in the back and count him up, and then we'll, announce who that is, and then we'll do the same thing for the vice president.
So do I vote?
Yes.
Who's president?
You slip into a church home early?
And, and have a cat on your lap.
That's right. Can't quit moving until you're ready.
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez is our council president.
Thank you. Now we're gonna do vice, right?
Yes.
Everybody else thinks I am. I've been shot.
Vice President is Councilmember Larson.
No change. Don't have to move any, any drawers around or anything, okay? Okay, the next item of business is a presentation by Tim Hugas on access control.
Your Honor, may I say a few words?
Absolutely.
I'm not going to steal any of Tim's thunder, but I would like to give credit where credit is due, and this has been approximately an eight to nine month project. It takes a lot of design, a lot of planning, a lot of collaboration, and, uh, Tim has, has spearheaded quite a bit of that, as well as Keith Jones. We had to mix the two divisions because, as you well know, Keith is very protective of this building and all city facilities, and Tim, on the other hand, is very protective and frugal when it comes to the IT projects, and so they have spent a lot of time, um, protecting the best interests of the public. This particular project, just the access control itself, took a meeting, meetings of ten to fifteen staff in this building to decide what was the best alternative, and what, what purpose were we trying to serve, and of course, the purpose was safety. Safety for our employees, safety for members of the public that might be in the building at the time if something should, should happen. So I would like to, uh, give a lot of credit to Tim Hugas, as well as Keith Jones, and this project, just the safety access control was about 20,000. The glass door portion of that was about 12,000. So we have spent a considerable amount of money towards this building and the life of this building, and tried to design it with the future in mind, that would, this will help facilitate a lot of, of public meetings and, and, uh, help us coordinate events. So I, I hope you're pleased with the end project and, and with no further, um, yes, I, I'm gonna trade places with Tim, is what I'm saying. So if you see a selfie of me, it's because I'm heading the cameras.
Well, I do get to go run the cameras.
Yes.
Terrific.
Well, good evening, council, mayor. Happy New Year to all. I hope it's a blessed year for all of us. Um, Courtney mentioned, uh, the collaborative nature of the project, and she sure is right. Uh, really appreciate, uh, starting with you all approving the capital project, uh, for access control here, uh, as well as working with Keith and some of the other departments, uh, to bring it all, uh, bring it all together, so, thank you. We have a few outstanding pieces of hardware we've been waiting on, and, uh, they're all scheduled to arrive within the, the next couple of days. So I really feel that by the end of this week, virtually everything that can be installed and, uh, and wired up and working will be, so, uh, that's everything from the card readers at each of the doors that we're, uh, controlling, uh, the latches, uh, the push plates, push bars, all the kinds of things that, uh, that go along with that. Uh, Megan will have a buzzer to buzz folk in at the front, uh, front desk, and, uh, Community Development will also have a, uh, a phone, uh, at their, uh, east exiting door as they, uh, adopt a new but really old, uh, habit, I guess, of, uh, accepting public, uh, ultimately at that side door again, as in days of yore. So with the, uh, heavy lifting essentially done, uh, we'll have a few, uh, minor things to wrap up in the next, uh, couple of weeks. Some of that will include, uh, rekeying the doors that form the perimeter of the administrative services, uh, area. Um, only with rekeying those, you'll be ensure that access control, uh, is the only way in, if, if that makes sense. Uh, we'll also re, need to reconfigure, uh, the west exiting door out the back, and, uh, the east exiting door by Community Development, so that those outside doors can be, uh, locked in the unlocked position, if you will. Right now, you turn in your key, it, uh, it's just a momentary thing, you take your key out and it latches shut. So, uh, once again, this is how things were back in the old days, Sandy remembers. And so, uh, the idea is that, um, especially as it relates to the Community Development door, um, folk can come in because that door will be unlocked at eight o'clock. As soon as they step in, they'll hit an access control door, and, uh, they'll push a button, and, uh, that button will, uh, light up all the phones in the Community Development Department, and somebody will, uh, come and let them in and conduct their business. If they choose not to come in that way, they can come in the front and, and, uh, Megan will, uh, will provide service, uh, making sure they get to the people that they need to see. So at this point, uh, everything that's, that can be fired up is, and, uh, is working wonderfully. Um, IT has been testing that, um, with, uh, some of these badges for the last, uh, couple of weeks. So, uh, I'll pass around, uh, if you've not seen one of the, uh, one of the badges, this is what we'll be using. Um, in the past, uh, we had employee ID badges, uh, that folk could wear in the community, and, uh, and so we kinda moved away from that. Uh, some folk needed those to do their job. Uh, let's say you're victim advocacy, and you're at the hospital, and you're needing to get in to see somebody in a private matter, and, uh, and different PD folk probably as well, too. So, this will kind of, uh, this will kind of, uh, revisit the employee ID, the picture in the title, and city logo, and that sort of thing. Uh, we have a, a really old printer that we printed those badges on, and, uh, because it still works, we kinda hate throwing it away. Uh, unfortunately, the, uh, the ID badges, because of the antenna wire that's coiled up in there, they're too thick and too stiff, uh, to run through that printer, but we found some labels that are die-cut, uh, exactly to match the card, and so we'll print on the labels and then affix the labels, uh, to the card. Uh, we've kinda laid out, changed the format just a little bit on the employee cards, and so, um, um, a sample, I can, I can pass around if you're interested. The, uh, the cards, uh, proximity cards will, uh, will activate at about two inches away from the reader. Uh, you've got 10 seconds to, uh, open the door, so even if you've got your arms full of groceries, you can still set something down. Leave the groceries on my desk. And, uh, if you have any questions about that, or would like to see a demonstration of that, uh, you can certainly, uh, make some latches go afterwards, uh, and, uh, show you how that, that, that perimeter is, uh, is in place, and, and we're, uh, pretty close. Additionally, um, we've had some outstanding projects, as you know, with the, uh, sound system and some of the... and some of those kinds of things. We promised to get rid of some clutter on the floor and cables and so a bump strip that was over there for the phone has been replaced with a hardwired cable under the dais and a phone mounted permanently there by Megan. We've cleaned up some other things. And we'll eventually put in a fairly permanent, semi-permanent bump strip to replace this cloth strip that we've been looking at. What we've done is designed something that will sort of go underneath the end panel of the senior staff table here. It'll have a metal bump strip coming all the way out and then a little plate and the front casters on the podium will index in there. And so every time the room's taken down or put back, you know, things will kinda end up in the same place and provide some protection for our cable and so we're looking forward to that. Just got the quotes on that today, so we'll get that fabbed up here real quick. And we've got a projector in the ceiling and that's all ready to go. Did some final wiring on that today. And I think Kyle will have a presentation with one of his committees next week, so you'll look forward to that, I'm sure. I think the Splash Pad folk are, will be making a presentation, so. That's about all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Any questions? So you're in the process of now issuing ID cards to?
We will be. That'll probably take a
Hasn't started.
A week of our spare time and a very, very slow printer. We may also consider expanding our test group a little bit instead of just rolling everything out to the, to the entire employee base. So maybe we'll bring Community Development and let folks start using that, coming in the back door.
Keys will still work, though?
Just kinda getting the feel for it. Pardon?
Manual key will still work?
Yes, yes. The only place the manual key will not work is the perimeter doors of the administrative services area. So the two new glass doors and the door here by the Urbicat Conference Room coming in the, coming in the back and then the door by Mia's office. Those will be rekeyed. And then we just really won't distribute those, PD or maintenance, maybe the mayor or Stephen will have a key, but it'll basically just be off limits, forces everybody to use the access control, which is kinda the purpose. Otherwise, we don't know who's coming and going and we still have keys in the wind potentially, so we haven't really accomplished absolute security until we do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, council committee reports and council members' roundtable. So, Mr. Bailey, have you got anything for us tonight?
I don't have any committee reports, just
Okay.
I was present at the Friends of the Fair fundraiser on New Year's Eve and went out, went across very well and had a good turnout, so. There was a lot of things going on that night and I know Mike and his staff were out in force and I think everything went pretty smoothly, so thank you for that.
Good. Mr. Canaan?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing?
Okay, we had, last night, we had our School District Number Twenty-Five Recreation Board meeting and we just paid bills. Mr. Gores was there representing for the, to have a committee to do the bypass and Rails to Trails update. And we all have our, on January eighteenth at six o'clock at the School Administration Building, School Board Room, our grant application meeting. Region four meeting. We had one, and I said we would have one scheduled for the seventh of this month. I just had an email, I just, I don't think you've even seen this one yet, Mayor. This is, they given us four options to have that meeting. Option number one would be hold a meeting at a scheduled time and have Scott Badley call in, discuss the Madden formula and funding. That's option A. Option B, hold a meeting February eighth at, Friday, the eighth, what would it be, the eighth of February, of January and from eight in the morning to ten in the morning. And Shelley will attend to discuss the Madden funding formula, SLIB rewrites, WIO link and regional elections. Region four, WHAM board members and appoint a new member to the Legislative Committee. Option C, hold a meeting Monday, January eleventh and Shelley will attend that, discuss the following and it's the same thing that we just, and then. Option D, postpone the meeting until the WHAM winter work session. I will get ahold of Katie tomorrow and find out what we want to do for sure.
Okay, okay. We can, we can send that out to anybody that'd like to attend that meeting.
Email it to everybody, so.
Yeah, Your Honor, I did talk to Katie today and I was surprised they put out that many options, but I know having the meeting, there isn't only gonna be about fifty percent of the people attending if we had the meeting on the seventh, which was, wait, the meeting was
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. And so I had recommended to her that having someone call in and having just a conference call all around would be a good option, but they obviously didn't take that one.
Evidently not, she didn't. I received this at four forty-nine PM today, this email.
I see, okay. Well, let's, I guess we'll work on that and see what we need to do. It could be that a conference call would be a way to deal with it if everybody got on the, could get on the telephone someplace and, you know, we had a call set up. Isn't quite as satisfactory as face-to-face, but it's better than a lot of travel, too. So maybe if we've just got some specific issues that we wanna talk about, that will, that would suffice and then have the meeting. Cheyenne Hall, we're already down there for WHAM.
I will work on that tomorrow.
Okay, you let us know what's going on.
Yeah, I will.
Mr. Larson?
Your Honor, the only comment I have is the ice rink up at the stadium is, I think, a great success in that we've moved it from the previous location to its present location and expanded it and made it a lot easier, smoother. And I don't know if you haven't taken the opportunity to go up there and ice skate, but some of us have and Steve and I enjoyed it immensely. I didn't see Steve ice skate, but it's fun. And that's a good use of property and resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, I had the opportunity, New Year's Eve, to spend with the Splash Pad group. Christina Olson and Rebecca Jones put on a great presentation up there. They had a lot of people show up as well, supported. Holiday Inn was a huge supporter of First Interstate Bank. A lot of those ladies brought it together and made it very possible. It was a good time. You know, they raised some money and they had some fun and there was a lot of, a lot of good donations, a lot of good work done, so it was really neat to see the energy and all the charisma that they have kinda come focused together to put together a real good showing for the first annual. I'm sure that's something that we'll probably see happen again next year.
Good, great. Ms. Gibbon?
I don't really have anything to report, but I would like to thank the staff for working on the endowment. Right now, we're coming up with a new agreement for the senior center and trying to find ways to be able to save them money so that we're not having to dip into that endowment so much. And you guys have been awesome. Thank you so much. I know there's a lot of emails and stuff going back and forth, but I mean, every avenue that can possibly be driven down to try to figure out ways to just save a little bit of money here and there, 'cause it adds up really quickly, they have done, so you guys have done awesome. Thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you. City Administrators?
Yes, Your Honor. In regards to the Splash Pad group, they want to apply for School District Twenty-Five funds and so we need a minute action from the council to allow them to, to approve their submittal of the application for fifty thousand dollars since they are a committee under the city. And so if we could get that tonight, that'd be great because they need to have it in before January eighteenth.
Okay. Somebody wanna move?
Can I ask a question?
After.
Oh, sorry.
Let's, let's, let's get the motion.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Splash Pad group's fifty thousand dollar grant through RREC.
Second. They moved in second and now is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, that's not for RREC, that's for School District Number Twenty-Five Recreation Board. No, I think we can just
Say it right.
We can get it right.
We'll, we'll say it right.
We know the intention.
Okay, okay. Okay. So, Holly, you have a question?
My only question is, is that I thought, so are they sending the application in or what?
Yeah, they're just submitting it to the, to the board and then they would determine how much money they're gonna give to them, if any.
So are they not bringing it on the eighteenth?
They're gonna be at the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what you meant by submitting it.
That's right.
Okay, sorry, I was confused.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes.
The other thing, Your Honor, I'm trying to set up a goal-setting session for the council. Tentatively, we have that scheduled for January twenty-sixth, which is a Tuesday. If you could let me know if that's gonna be a problem for you. I've got Gary Michaud is gonna be our moderator. I don't know if you know Gary. He used to be kinda the assistant to the mayor in Lander. Great guy, now works for the Catholic College over in Lander. He's agreed to do that, so that would be up at CWC. I'll have to schedule the room up there at the Intertribal Center from about six to eight. And then we'll be getting emails out to have a lot of the legwork done beforehand, so we don't have to spend too much time there. So if, like I said, if you could let me know if that's a problem, if we have too many, we may have to reschedule to a different date. And then the final thing is for our work session next week, we've got JAVIATION coming up to give updates or how the project went up at the airport and also kind of a history of how that, how the airport has kind of moved through the past. And then we're gonna have the Splash Pad come and give us an update and on what they've been doing over the course of the last couple of months, so we have an exciting work session coming up.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mayor's comments. I got to enjoy the skate park. We had grandkids come and took them, took them down there, they loved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, couldn't, couldn't get them out of there. Took a crowbar doll, pry them, pry them off the ice. And so that was, that was a good thing and I, and I've received quite a few comments. And so that's, you know, something that we need to give the parks people and RREC a pat on the back for pulling that all together. Worked out, worked out pretty nice, I think.
Your Honor, may I interrupt a second on the same subject of the ice skating? I found out today that the pad, the lining will have to be replaced because the way we stored it last year, the mice got into it and put holes in it.
Your Honor, and it wasn't so much the mice, the holes also came from ice skates last year. Due to our location and the grade of the field, we weren't able to utilize the entire ice skating rink and so there were certain spots where the pad was exposed
Oh, yeah.
Have ice on it and as a result, when the skates went over it, there were
Cut it.
There were holes put in it.
Is there a possibility that we repair that or how do we? I mean, what is the type of structure that we've got there?
Your Honor, I know that they've looked at repairing that, but it seems right now there hasn't been an appropriate solution that can actually patch those holes and remain adhered, adhere to the material currently. I don't know right now what the material is made of.
Thank you.
Your Honor, from what I found out today, that they're gonna apply for, to the School District for RREC Board for more money to replace it. And it should be about eight hundred, nine hundred dollars. So they're just gonna try to replace the whole thing.
Yeah, that'd be easy.
And that is a, that's, that's a solution because, you know, when we've had it on Second Street, we've had blowouts and problems there and uneven field, this is a great location.
This is a nice place, isn't it? Yeah. And, and there's a place for the spectators to sit and watch and
Right.
And egg people on and, you bet.
Yep.
It's great, that's great. I had, we had a good time down there with the grandkids, so that was, that was fine. Thursday night, we have the Community Dialogue. It's gonna be in Lander, at the Lander Community Center. It starts at six o'clock. I thought the one we had in December was excellent and I look forward to this, participating in this. So anybody on the city council would like to attend that. Are we gonna take a van over?
Yeah, we could take a van if there's enough people that wanna go over as a group or if you wanna go over separately, so maybe just let me know if you wanna go as a group and I can make arrangements for transportation.
Okay. It starts at six, so we'll probably have to leave here about five, ten or five fifteen, something like that in order to be there. And that's, I think, is, is everything I've got on my mind that's coming up. So we've got some calendar events. We're gonna meet with our legislators on the twentieth and so if you have issues that you'd like to bring up at that time, that'll be an opportunity for us to meet with all legislators, ten thirty in the morning. Can you think of anything else on the agenda, on the schedule that we ought to talk about? No? Okay, we don't need an executive session. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Take it.
They moved in second and anybody gonna stay?